I call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council, January 19, 2023. Glad to have everybody here. We have, this is Kim Cradaville, correct? And not to forget, we also have Senator Ben Cardin. Very, very good. We really appreciate that you took the time to invite us for a personal session so that we can share our concerns in Wycomico County with you because it's so important to us, what we want to try to accomplish for the citizens of Wycomico County. And Senator, the hard work you're doing for the entire eastern shore and the state of Maryland, we do appreciate it.
Well, Mr. President, first of all, thank you very much for this opportunity. I appreciate it very much.
Very good. I guess you would like us to open up for you with our questions, our concerns?
That's fine. If I might, you already introduced Kim Cradaville, who's on the call, who's my eyes and ears on the eastern shore of Maryland. Mike Thomas, who's my bricks and mortar person, is also on the call that can answer technical questions about how earmarks are being done or the appropriation process or grant issues. The purpose for this opportunity for me is to make sure we have not only a contact now, but a continuing contact to help Wycomico County as our federal partnership. One last point, then I'll open it up to questions. It is Team Maryland. We obviously, we have a new administration in Annapolis with the Moore administration that took the oath of office yesterday. Your federal team, I work very closely with Chris Van Hollen. The two of us share responsibilities and work together. He serves on the Appropriations Committee. I serve on the Finance Committee. He serves on the Banking and Urban Affairs Committee. I serve on the Environment and Public Works Committee. So we have the committees fairly well covered, working with Andy Harris, who, you know, yesterday was announced he will be what we call Cardinal, will be one of the chairman of one of the subcommittees on the Appropriations Committee, the Ag Subcommittee, which is a very important position. So let me turn it over to you, and I'll be glad to try to respond to your questions or give you an update as to where we are in the United States Congress.
Good. Thank you very much again. And I know that, you know, you are on, in addition to the Finance Committee, the Small Business and Entrepreneurship Committee. You're a very busy man. You're also on the Subcommittee with Transportation and Infrastructure, Subcommittee on Fisheries, Wildlife and Water. And believe me, those are all committees that are very important to us as far as what our goals are in Wycomico County. I think the first and foremost of what we probably should address is the fact that we have an unbelievably great airport in Wycomico County. We have made, over the last couple of years, millions and millions, tens of millions of dollars in investments in the airport. And it is the gem in Wycomico County and I think in the state of Maryland. If I understand correctly, it's the only airline that's actually headquartered in the state of Maryland. And we would like to try to make sure that we can keep Piedmont, American Airlines in Wycomico County and in the state of Maryland for the benefit of everyone. I know that we have programs that we're working on now, very interested in trying to continue forward with a pilot program. And we've been working in concert with UMES, which, as you know, is a historically black university. And they have a great pilot program there, and we're trying to expand that. We're using a $3.3 million investment also from Governor Hogan through the Rural Maryland Economic Development Fund to develop a maintenance training program. So these are more initiatives, I think, that we could take, which would be very in line with the DBE, the Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program. Several efforts that we're making on our part, I know you're probably aware that in Dubuque, Ohio, and Toledo, Iowa, and Toledo, Ohio, and Ithaca, New York, they closed, they closed those airlines, they took, American Airlines pulled out of those particular areas. And we're lucky, I think, with Dave Ryan through Salisbury Wycomico Economic Development and the efforts on the county to be able to keep this airport in Wycomico County, and it is a gem for us. So I guess in saying that, you know, however it might be that, you know, in your inner workings with the committees and as far as the funding that we're looking for, that somehow or other, we appreciate if you could continue with that assistance to the county and to our airport.
Senator, let me just comment on the airport in Salisbury. It's an extremely important asset in our region, in our state, and yes, it is an extremely high priority for our federal congressional delegation. I know you have three new members of the council. I want to thank them for their willingness to step forward to serve in this public capacity. You know, you were their rubber hits the road. You are the local officials where people can find you all the time, and you can't push the problems off to someone else. At the federal level, we can always blame the states, states can blame the counties, but you really are where the public expects answers to questions. So we appreciate your willingness for this service. In the last Congress, we passed several really important bills to try to help you do your work and to provide the services necessary to the people of Wycomico County. One of those bills was the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill, which provides a once-in-a-generation opportunity to modernize our infrastructure. And yes, we will talk about roads and bridges because you have a lot of water in the county. Bridges are in shape, need to be kept from, in good repair. The state of Maryland will receive a substantial amount of federal funds, new federal funds, to upgrade our bridges and to do our normal road and bridge work in our state. So there's going to be opportunities there. Under the infrastructure bill, there's also going to be opportunities for broadband, which is very important for Wycomico County. Under the infrastructure bill, there will also be funds for the Chesapeake Bay, $238 million for the bay. But it also provides money for the airports. And we do recognize Salisbury will get funding under the infrastructure bill. You've got funding under the American Rescue Plan and CARES Act funding, went to the Wycomico County Airport, Salisbury Airport. We know that there is a disagreement in the local desire to expand the runway to either 7,800 or 8,000 feet. The federal government has approved a partnership up to 7,600 feet, which means we're going to have to find creative ways to deal with the last 200 to 400 feet extension, and we will work with you to try to find ways in which we can partner with you in that regard. In the FY '22 budget, the Salisbury Airport received an earmark of a half a million dollars. We know that. There's money under the CARES Act that we're looking at giving you the flexibility to use for the purposes that you want. So yes, we will very much be working with you in regards to the importance of the investments we make at the airport. We do want to make sure you maintain your service. There are certain rules that make it a little bit more advantageous for commercial carriers to service our rural airports, and we want to make sure that is the case. So yes, and of course, it's so much related development in the region depend upon the airport's viability. So it is a very, very high priority for us.
Yeah, we've always said, Senator, that, you know, our biggest responsibility, we feel, is to try to keep businesses in the region and also to try to bring as many new businesses into the region as we possibly can. And I say over and over again, I had a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce yesterday, and I said to them as well, can you imagine how we would be able to try to encourage new businesses to come if the CEOs realized that they would have to drive to Washington, or they'd have to drive to Philadelphia or Baltimore just to get out of town, as opposed to being able to fly out of this area? So it's very important regionally and lower eastern shore for this airport to continue to thrive.
I mean, you have also industries that are located that require an airport for either bringing people in or the business that they do. You have just the reputation of the lower shore to have a viable airport. There's a lot of reasons in addition to the passenger service itself.
Thank you. One of our, well, I don't know if any of the two newer members have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
On the airport or?
On any topic you'd like, sure.
You know me. This is Shani Shields. I'm newly elected. I used to sit on the city council. And one of the most successful programs that we had was through the Wycomico County Partnership and the crime prevention funding. You know, a lot of times, the police department, law enforcement gets for more police cameras, et cetera. But I believe that we need to have crime prevention funding for nonprofits to save our children. And we went to the MECO last week, the conference they had, there was, in Andoni County, they have a program called Fresh Start, where they try to get the children that may be troubled before they get into juvenile services. Right now, a child has to commit a crime or something before a parent can get help. And it should be some kind of program that we could have, some kind of crime prevention funding. I know it was cut in the state of Maryland years ago because we did an after-school program at my church. It was very successful. And also, funding for community policing, because that would be important, too, to build the trust for law enforcement officers. And I've already talked to our sheriff here about doing a community day at one of the playgrounds, so the community could meet the sheriffs, not just seeing them arrest someone, but have a fun day. And he was very receptive to that. And then the last thing I had was Welfare to Work program. I know during Bill Clinton's administration, they had something called Welfare to Work, where the mothers or the parents of children, if they were on social service, they would have to, some kind of way, get training to go to work. Because it seems like the incentive to go to work is being lost. And I think we need to find some way to get these parents self-help themselves so they don't have to depend on the system, per se. And that's about all I would have to say, believe it or not, because I'm usually long-winded. And I know your time is very important. And thanks for a meeting with us today. I should have started off by saying that. And it's an honor to meet you.
Shani, first of all, congratulations on your election. You have a great reputation. I'm looking forward to working with you. And I know that your work at the local level and now at the county level, I'm sure you're going to be a very active member of the council. So thank you very much for your willingness to step up to this important responsibility. Crime and public safety, Governor Moore mentioned that yesterday as one of his principal interests. We clearly have challenges in Maryland and around the nation on public safety. We do have federal partnerships. Most of the law enforcement initiatives will happen at the state or county level or municipal level. We do have federal partnerships that are available through federal grant programs, through the COPS program and other law enforcement programs that we have, the BURN grants. We do have different federal programs that are eligible for partnership to deal with the exact issues you're talking about. It might be juvenile issues. It might be dealing with modernizing the capacity of the local law enforcement agencies to use modern technology to assist in law enforcement. It might be community engagement. It might be efforts to deal with violent crimes. We have in our urban centers the Joint Strike Task Force to deal with violent crimes. We also have the drug issues that lead to gang issues, anti-drug and gang issues that you can partner with us in order to deal with some of those matters. I've had several conversations with U.S. Attorney Barron in regards to these issues. He's the U.S. Attorney for Maryland, which includes the entire state, including the Wycomico County. And he very much will want to partner with the local law enforcement with the resources we have at the federal level. I do want to mention one other issue here, and that's in behavioral health. On the Safer Communities Act that passed this past Congress, part of that was to partner in regards to behavioral health issues, providing community support, particularly in our schools, to identify challenges that we have in our school system itself. I would urge Wycomico County to try to partner under the Safer Communities Act to take advantage of these additional funds that are available through the school system to deal with students that have challenges that we need to identify in order to keep our children safe in our schools. On welfare-to-work issues, the federal government passed a very strong bill several Congresses ago on the requirements for welfare to work to do either in job training or to have exceptions to this. There are some state exceptions, including Maryland. So this issue now is primarily in Annapolis rather than in Washington as to how to implement the assistance for needy families, the TANF grants, et cetera. It's primarily at the state level, and there's a new administration. Give them a little bit of time to get their priorities together. But I would have some conversations with your state delegation and the new leadership in Annapolis on some of the issues in regards to how we assist families that need help on a temporary basis until they can be self-sufficient.
Thank you very much.
Josh Hastings is also with us, Councilman Hastings. Is your second term?
Yes.
Now, he's only 14, Senator.
I know, Josh.
Good to see you, Senator. Thank you again for having me.
Congratulations on your reelection.
Appreciate it. I just wanted to briefly bring up one quick issue that, just put it on your radar, and I don't know if you've heard much about it yet, but one of the first votes I had on the council four years ago, I was very proud to be able to vote for a new funding for Pirate Swarf. This will be, this will be the best and most exciting new county park in the state of Maryland. We are really excited about this. We have a regional park located here. This will have water access, which of course, as you know, is a dire need, that we need to have more space, open space with water access. This is historic property in so many ways, and it's just a wonderful space. We are trying to, the county is doing its best to try to turn this property into a full park. We did get a Land and Water Conservation Fund grant four years ago. Given the challenges with COVID, as you know, and then with multiple archaeological digs and other kind of issues, we've had to delay it, we've had to push it back a little bit or, pardon me, ask for extensions. And so, long story made short, we really could use some help. If there's anything that could be done with a one-year extension through the National Park Service, we currently have a deadline of August 31st, and anything that we can do to, you know, just to extend that one more year. Of course, I'm looking, you can't see this, Mr., for Senator, but Steve Miller, our head of our Recreation of Parks is here. And Steve, I'd be remiss if I don't say anything, if I don't introduce you or say if there's anything else you want to say on this topic, but Steve has done a fantastic job with our county parks, and this is, this is going to be, this will be a really amazing park, and we really, really want to get this off the ground. Steve, if there's anything else you want to add to?
Good morning, Senator Cardin. Thank you for the time. I think Councilman Hastings summarized it very beautifully. I will just bring to your attention, we have been in contact with Senator Van Hollen, so he's aware of the issue. And we've worked primarily through the Department of Natural Resources at the state level. It's a federal grant that routes through DNR. They have made the request to extend that grant from this August to August of 2024, and to this point, that's been unsuccessful. And if we're not able to get the approvals and construct this spring and that grant expires, it could threaten the entire project. So any help that you or Senator Van Hollen could offer to extend that, like Councilman Hastings said, it's a tremendous opportunity for water access and a lot of other benefits. And between COVID and a lot of the other approvals that have been required, we've just pushed as hard as we can, but to this point, that deadline is approaching, and any help you can offer is greatly appreciated.
Well, thanks for that explanation, and Josh, congratulations on your reelection. We'll support you, do everything we can to get that one-year extension. We'll make sure we work very closely with Senator Van Hollen and Congressman Harris. We will absolutely support that. You're exactly right with the delays as a result of COVID and the aspects to that. You need to have the extra time, and we will support you on that. Access to Chesapeake Bay to us is one of our priorities. Chesapeake Bay is a priority. I want to make that clear. And our commitment to make sure that we, our legacy to future generations is to give them this national, international treasure that we have here in Maryland known as the Chesapeake Bay. And access to our water is extremely important. Part of the reason why the National Park Service is interested in helping you in regards to this county park is that it gives more education opportunities, more recreational opportunities for people to understand the, how precious our water is that leads into and part of the Chesapeake Bay. So absolutely, we'll work with you to allow you to be able to use this federal partnership to develop this park in a way that people can appreciate and enjoy our natural water access. And we also look for other opportunities to help you in that regard.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. We also have Councilman Jeff Merritt. Jeff is newly elected as well. If we can give him the floor, certainly.
Good morning, Senator Cardin. Jeff Merritt, I represent District Two in Wycomico County, and I'm like Ms. Shields, I'm one of the new kids on the block here. And I'm still surviving the hazing period, so I just have a question about the water sewer infrastructure issue that we have here in Wycomico County. It's a pretty big topic that affects our whole county, and it's a project that is a little, little late getting out of the gate, but it seems like all the puzzle pieces are coming together. And it's going to require a lot of, lot of funding, so just your thoughts on that.
Well, Jeff, first of all, congratulations on your election. Water infrastructure is one of my highest priorities. I serve on the committee, I chaired the Subcommittee that deals with infrastructure on the Environment and Public Works Committee. We did get a substantial increase in the funding on the water projects under the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill. The primary sources are the revolving funds for wastewater and drinking water. This goes primarily through state priority selections, but let me make this comment because I agree with you. There was a time we had the best water infrastructure in the world, but that was 100 years ago. It's time for us to modernize our water infrastructure. The problem is it's out of sight, out of mind for many of our constituency. Turn on their water faucets, and they expect to have water, and don't realize that we have an old system in place. We waste a lot of water. The energy loss is great, and there is a public health risk in regards to the manner in which we have not upgraded our water infrastructure. There's also a limit as to what ratepayers can pay, so we have to look for more creative ways to help upgrade both our wastewater infrastructure as well as our, say, drinking water. So yes, we'll work with you. We know that you have a lot of concerns with people who are not connected to public water. We need to give you the capacity to do that in a way that is affordable for the ratepayers, and I think there are ways that we can help. A lot of this, as I said, goes through the formative programs that go through the state, but there are some individual opportunities that we will have, and we'll be glad to work with you in that regard.
Excellent. Thank you, and thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak today.
We appreciate that, Senator Cardin. You know, Wycomico County, we have invested very heavily. We've just finished a new water and sewer master plan, and we'll send you a copy if you don't have one. It's a very, very broad scope as far as what the needs are throughout the rural areas of Wycomico County. And I think the goal there is to try to make sure that not only we maintain property values for each of these homes where their septic systems may go up, and they literally don't have enough land available to put in a new well or a new septic system. So we've recognized that, and we want to make sure that we can move forward with it. It's working with the local municipalities and the townships in Wycomico County to try to make sure that either we expand their services to the rural areas or else we create our own wastewater treatment authority. However we look at it, we're probably looking, I think, estimated somewhere in the, in the number of about a half a billion dollars, literally that much of an investment, and we've recognized that, if I'm not correct, Mrs. Hurley. As I understand, it's about 500 million is what they're anticipating might be needed to cooperate or to coordinate with the local municipalities. But this is a huge priority and an effort on our part to try to make sure that not only do the homeowners have safe water and septic systems, but it's good for the Chesapeake Bay as well.
Look, this is an incredibly important priority. We have, we are behind. I'm not surprised to hear those numbers. You multiply that times the population of our nation, and you know that at the federal level, we really have to up our game. And this is an area that affects some, and not only affects public health, it affects the economy and your ability to have economic growth. It affects the environment of the bay. There's a lot at stake here, so we've got to get this right, and I'm glad to see you have a master plan. I would encourage you to work with your state legislators so that the state of Maryland embraces your strategies, and we can work together, the federal state with the county, to implement the plan over a reasonable period of time so that at the end of the day, you have the water infrastructure you need for the people of Wycomico County.
And we appreciate that. We recognize, I think it's about 18,000 households in Wycomico County are in severe need of some type of assistance in that matter. Josh?
I just want to add on to it. Obviously, Senator, as you know, we have a compounding issue also with climate change, with the rising sea levels. We do have now homeowners who have reached out in Tiaskin, Nana Coke, and Athol, who have homes that are near the water, who are now, their wells are facing salinization, more salt in their wells. And that's, of course, that makes it that they can't drink their water in addition to then having failing septic systems. So this is, this is a real concern that's, I think, becoming a much bigger concern, much faster than many folks had expected. So I know, I just want you to know, the county, of course, we're taking it very seriously to address it and trying to look through any state resources, but, including the Bay Restoration Fund and other potential uses there. But this is, this is a really big challenge here in Wycomico, and I just want to make sure you understand the full scope of it for us. Thank you.
Well, I was in Sharm El Sheikh for the COP27 climate meetings recently, so we have a global challenge in regards to rising sea levels, rising temperatures, and the impact. Flooding is, there are communities, Pakistan, thousands of people lost their lives because of sea level increases. So yes, our strategy needs to be twofold. You have to have two strategies to deal with this. One is mitigation. We've got to figure out and be part of a global solution to reduce the, our carbon footprint. We are already past the time where we should have acted. It's now going to be more, it's more than a crisis circumstances, but we have to be a responsible player on the global scene to reduce our carbon footprint. And then secondly, we have to adapt. This is the reality, so we need adaptation. We have to deal with shoreline preservation. We have to deal with the realities of what we can do to make it, to make it available for the people of our community to deal with this. We have a lot of military installations located in Maryland on the coast. We got to deal with making sure they can adapt to the realities. We don't want to lose their capacity to remain in Maryland. So we have a dual-front approach to mitigate and adapt, and clearly, a county like Wycomico that has so much water, so much water frontage, that's why these, several of the bills that we passed, Inflation Reduction Act, has substantial amount of funds in there for dealing with coastal issues. In the Water Resources Development Act, I was able to get $100 million for shoreline preservation in Maryland. So we have a new pool of dollars that are now available in our state. We're just now looking at what that game plan will be with the allocation of those funds. So there are funds available for us in Wycomico County to deal with what you're talking about. But once again, we got to work with the state, make sure that we have our priorities set.
No, I, to go back just one second, I know that Councilman Shields was talking about, you know, barriers to employment, et cetera. I just want to let you know that we have a very successful Vehicles for Change organization now in Wycomico County. We just did a ribbon cutting not too long ago, and we can't get them through the program fast enough before they're hired immediately. Pohanka Automotive has been a very, very good part of that whole system. Sandy Angela does a fantastic job in her outreach within the community through Pohanka. But it's a job training program, as you know, for those who are formerly incarcerated, and we've been there personally to see what great, great work is being done. So you're aware of another effort that we're trying to do on behalf of Wycomico County.
Great.
You had touched on broadband, and we are expanding broadband. We've got an investment through Talky Communications of about 13 and a half million to reach out to 700 homes on the east side of the county, and they've already put in for funding for the west side of the county for next year, so we're looking forward to having that come to fruition. One of the last times I met you, I'm going to move a little quickly here because I know we have a little bit of time. One of the last times I met you was actually at Parkside High School. I know you remember that, when we were looking at one of the houses that was built by the students. We went from building houses to building dog houses. We kind of, you know, reversed a little bit, but we are back again to building houses again, and I know that's a big interest of yours. And it is, it isn't Wycomico County. We want to see some enhanced CTE programs here. I guess trying, you know, it'd be on us to try to create more public-private partnerships, but anything, you know, that we can do to enhance our CTE programs would be invaluable. enhance our CTE programs would be invaluable.
Agree. I remembered that visit, and very impressed. So you're absolutely right. We have a labor issue in America. We have to realize that. And we need to get people trained for the opportunities that are there. For many, it is the technical skills that they need, that we have to work on. And others, we got to, it's not one size fits all in education. And we have to recognize that vocational ed is just as important. So I agree with you.
And we have an excellent concerted effort in Wacomico County, involving all, you know, our local Board of Education, Warwick Community College. Ray Hoy does an excellent job there. I don't know if you knew that Dr. Hoy had announced that he will be retiring from Warwick Community College. That's going to be a great loss. But we have such a coordinated effort between the schools, Warwick Community College, Tri-County Council, the Lower Eastern Shore, the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance. I know they've recently received, or will be receiving funding for offshore wind energy as well. But a lot of collaboration for workforce development in this county. It is at the forefront of our efforts.
Absolutely. I'm familiar with all those. Your Tri-County Council is fabulous. Warwick is an incredible asset to the Lower Shore. And I am aware of the fact that we're going to have a big shoes to fill with his retirement.
And my final comment, because I don't want to take too much more of your time, or the council's. Volunteer firefighters, Senator, we are finding that we are really at a critical juncture, where a lot of the volunteer firefighters are aging out. We're doing everything we can to try to create incentives to bring in new firefighters. We developed a property tax benefit for firefighters, actually it was for permanently disabled. But we're trying to review if we can't enable some type of tax break, property tax break, for all of volunteer firefighters, anything imaginable, and anything creative we can do. Because this is, this is really one area where it isn't as it used to be. There are a lot more regulations to being a firefighter. You can't, not as many businesses want to allow them to leave their work. The regulations is almost like a second master's degree. And we recognize the importance of those regulations, restrictions. But I'm afraid that what's happening is that the volunteer fire companies are beginning to go away. And if we were to have to pay for a complete fire system in Wacomico County, it would be pretty much unsustainable. I don't know if there's a federal issue there, how the federal government might see that from a broader perspective.
Well, no, the federal government assists in several ways. This is an area that's strongly bipartisan. We are blessed in this nation with the volunteer and career professional firefighters. We are, we have a great history in Maryland, in regards to the volunteers. And we are, we want to make sure that we can continue that into the future. But you're 100% right. It's a lot more complicated today, for so many different reasons. And we have to be able to provide the support for our volunteer companies to be able to continue, which requires us to provide a lot of the full-time needs that they have, and to provide the benefits, so that a person can become a volunteer, and be protecting their family at the same time. So we agree with you. We have several programs at the federal level to partner. Some of those provide the equipment that the volunteer companies and the career companies all need. Some of it is to deal with personnel itself, with training, and part of it to deal with benefits. So we need to rethink how we can preserve this, recognizing the realities of today's society is not what it was 25 years ago. And we are very much interested in preserving the great blend that we have between the volunteer and career professionals.
Well, good. Do we have any more comments from?
I just wanted to say one thing, and I didn't put it on the list. And I don't know if the federal government can help. We have a growing homeless population. And I get constant calls, I haven't brought this up to the council, but how we can get help if we did bring that up, to address the homelessness, because we have a lot of tent cities around the community. Especially, I know one that's in my district. And any funding we could get, help if we wanted to start to address that in the future. Because I'm new, this is something that's dear to my heart. Because I get the question, I have all these empty buildings, how come they can't put them in, homeless, in these vacant stores, and things like that, that they tell me. The people on the street don't understand there's a process. So is there any funding that could help the county if they want to address this in the future, the homeless population?
The answer is yes. But it is not an easy solution. There are, we have a shortage of affordable housing in Maryland and in this country. So part of it is affordable housing. There, the largest single programs we have at the national level are tax credit programs, that assist in the private development of affordable housing. We have some new initiatives, one that I am the principal sponsor of, that would allow for communities to be able to have affordable housing, even if the construction costs or rehab costs exceed the market value in that community, to provide a credit for the difference. So we are looking at affordable housing issues to deal with the stock of housing, because we do not have adequate numbers of housing available for families to be able to afford, which has led to some of the homeless issues. The second problem, of course, is one of mental health services, and domestic services, that need to be upped in order to deal with those that are vulnerable becoming homeless. The state of Maryland has some initiatives there, in partnership with federal funding. And we can direct you there as to how those programs are being utilized in Wacomico County. So there are ways in which we can assist in that regard.
Thank you very much.
I can just be brief.
Yes.
First of all, Senator, it's never too early to start talking about having you come to the Maryland Folk Festival. You know, we held the National Folk Festival here for three, three years, four years, actually four years. But September 22nd through 24th, so I'll make sure we get that to your schedule, and to Kim. But we'd love to have you down for the Maryland Folk Festival. It's going to be a big deal here, here in Salisbury. And as you know, of course, our Senator, our, pardon me, our, you know, our mayor has just been chosen.
Jake, he's moving on.
He's moving on. But that doesn't mean that the progress and the great events and the things that we're doing are going to stop. So we've got a lot of good plans, and we hope that you'll join us in going forward here in Salisbury.
You know, Jake always, always was a great advocate for Salisbury. I'm sure he's going to continue to do that. And as we're talking about housing, obviously, he'll play a critical role. And he's very familiar with the problems in rural Maryland. So I think you'll have a friend in the Moore administration, in the now former mayor of Salisbury. But yes, I always enjoy, it's exciting to see the changes that have occurred, the positive development within Salisbury itself. And I look forward to personally attending those types of events.
Thank you, Senator. Senator, do you sing?
Do I sing?
Do you sing? Could we bring you in? I mean, would you be one of our acts?
You know, I want to tell you a story.
Oh, boy.
Tells you a little bit about my age. When I was in elementary school, and I attended a public elementary school in Baltimore City, I think it was in the second or third grade, we were singing. And they went by, and they tapped your shoulder. They preferred you just to mouth it, rather than to sing. I was one of those whose shoulder got tapped, and it forever influenced and scarred me in regards to my singing career. So I don't think you want me singing.
You could only mouth the words, right? That was your, you were restricted. Listen, again, we really appreciate this. You know, in order for everyone to prosper here, we really do need collaboration, you know, with the federal government and our federal representatives. And you are really such a great representative for us. And we appreciate you taking the time to meet with this new council so much. I had been told this morning, I'm not sure it's true, but I heard that you may have a meeting in reference to a debt ceiling today. So we appreciate all the more, the amount of the time you've taken to spend with us.
This, to me, is extremely important. And I thank you all. As I said, you are really the frontline of public service. So please feel at any time free to let us know if something's going right or wrong, that we can help you or understand better. We really appreciate your willingness to share that knowledge with us, so that we can represent you in Washington.
Thank you. And we thank your staff as well. Kim Cradville, good seeing you again. We talk quite frequently. We see you at Mako quite often. And we do appreciate all the hard work each and every one of you are doing.
Everybody stay safe, and we'll continue our conversations.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I remember the name of the gentleman who he introduced. I was distracted when he was making the introductions.
Technical government.
Whoever the other gentleman was, yeah.
Mike Thomas.
Mike Tombs?
Yeah.
Yeah, I couldn't remember his name. But I didn't want to leave Kim out either, so. We have, I guess we have to adjourn here. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
Second, second favor means adjourn. Thank you very much.